Is the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood held January 20th, 2015, at 6:00 PM at the Council Chambers. Deputy Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Delling?
Here.
Councilmember Linsky?
Here.
Councilmember Howagie?
Here.
Councilmember Garrison?
Present.
Vice Mayor Pfeiffer?
Here.
Mayor Jones?
Here.
And Councilmember Pratt is absent.
Okay, thank you. Okay, pledge of allegiance, we have Sarah Ortiz with us tonight.
Ready, begin. My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the council has a certificate for you. And Hales, you want to take a photo with this camera? Okay. Would you like to share the information about the C Y A city and your role?
Well, I just recently joined this year, and I wanted to give back to the community, so I decided to, like, fill out the paper. And we're recent, or we're trying to hold a senior dance, like, around Valentine's Day, so they have something to do, which I think is really cool, because instead of, like, being stuck in the home, they get to actually, you know, dance with their friends. We served Thanksgiving dinner at the mission, which was really cool, see, I just, all the families, like, they were just so friendly and happy. We got this awesome dinner, which they usually don't get, so that was really cool. And it's just really good.
All right, on behalf of the City Council, we all thank you, and appreciate your service to our youth and our whole community, so we would like to give you the certificate. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is a brief summary of current events by the mayor, city council, and/or city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during this summary unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. Mr. Bartasch.
Madam Mayor, council members, just to let you know, we're going to have our second builders' meeting this next Wednesday at 11:30, not this Wednesday, the following Wednesday, at the Public Safety Building, if any of the other council members would like to attend. We also received our statement of qualifications for the citywide flood study, and we'll be reviewing those and beginning the floods study shortly, hopefully, which is funded through the Flood Control District. Also, an important bit of information, and I think Councilmember Linsky will be pleased with this, in 2013, the City of Cottonwood pumped 2,794 acre-feet of water. This equates to a total gallons per capita daily usage of 108. In 2014, the city pumped 2,517 acre-feet, which equates to a total gallons per day, per capita use of 97.7. So, we had set a goal of 5% water usage reduction, and we've beat that with a 10% reduction. And this makes us the lowest in the Verde Valley, and one of the lowest in the state per capita use. It's really good news, and with that kind of information, I understand the mayor may have had something to do with this, too. We are going to start putting information like this in the water bills, with a little message on the water bill that says, "Did you know?" And for instance, the City of Cottonwood pumped 246 million gallons of water less in 2014 than we did in 2006. So, we're going to just start putting those kind of facts out in the newsletter, or in the water bills. So, good news. That's it, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel?
And John missed the good news. Let me say that again.
Go, go right ahead.
I'll give him, I'll give him the email.
Okay. All right. Anything else, counsel? Okay, so, about all I have is that the stewards of public lands cleaned Dominguez Avenue Extension on Saturday, and I'm happy to report that I saw fewer cigarette butts out there, but the ones that are out there fly right into very dry grasses, so I would encourage the public to dispose of them elsewhere, and not throw them out. And also, the Verde, let's see, Ver, no, Verde Valley, Birding and Nature Festival also cleaned up the county piece, which is right by the bridge, that area. So, we only found nine bags of garbage on our piece, so I think the public's doing, like, really awesome. We hadn't cleaned up since last May, May of 2014, so public's doing good about helping keep those rights of way clean. I'll be attending on Thursday, the 22nd, I'll be attending the Arizona Association of Economic Development members, we're going to go down to the legislature, and I'm going to talk to them about economic development. And everyone's seen Governor Ducey's budget, there's a lot of cuts, and just going to have to do some things on our own, maybe. But we do a lot on our own, the city manager can attest, and with Casey Rooney, and he's been excellent, and of course, we can see all the results that the council and staff and our economic development folks have created, along with the business people and the citizens, who are really the number-one reason that we're so successful. And then, on Monday, I think I'm going to be down there, like, three times in two weeks, or three times in seven days or less, but I'll also be going down next Monday to a Greater Arizona Mayor's meeting, where we're going to be talking to legislators also. So, that's my report for tonight. Moving on to the next item, call to the public, this portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action. Comments are limited to a five-minute time period. Is there anyone who would like to speak about something that's not on the agenda? If not, we'll close the floor to the public and move on to the next item, approval of the minutes, regular meeting of January 6th, 2015. I would entertain a motion.
I move we approve the minutes.
Second. Mr. Linsky made the motion, the vice mayor seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? My computer keeps going off. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. So, the minutes were approved. Comments regarding items listed on the agenda are limited to a five-minute time period per speaker. Unfinished business, number one. Ordinance number 607, amending chapter 5.12, cable television section 5.12.090, license fees of the municipal code to increase the maximum fee that can be assessed for a cable television license from 3% to 5% of the operator's gross revenues from subscribers in the city. Second and final reading. Mr. Horton?
Madam Mayor, counsel, we discussed this at our last meeting, at the first reading, this is the second reading, and proposed adoption of an ordinance that would simply allow the city to assess a franchise fee for cable licensees equal to what seems to be the prevailing rate around the state, and the rate that is paid to all other municipalities in this region. So, it changes the code to raise the cap to allow that to happen.
Okay, and we discussed this in detail during the first reading. Are there any questions from members of the council for Mr. Horton? All right, I would ask the members of the public who would like to speak about this item to please come forward. Okay, we'll close the floor to the public. I'd entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve ordinance 607.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Garrison made the motion, Mr. Howagie seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Deputy Clerk, please read ordinance number 607 by title only.
Ordinance number 607, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, amending chapter 5.12, cable television section 5.12.090, license fees of the Cottonwood Municipal Code. Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, new business, the following items are for council discussion, consideration, and possible legal action. Resolutions number 2779, 2780, 2781, and 2782, appointing members to the library board. We have Vanessa Ward, the library manager, to explain this item.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members.
Good evening.
We have four positions open, and we have five applicants. Two of the applicants are wanting to be reappointed, two have been our current volunteers, and one applied last year also, and he wasn't able to make it tonight. So, we're asking that you appoint four members.
Okay, so, we have with us tonight, we have DeeDee.
No, DeeDee has resigned.
Oh.
We have Nancy Trippiano, Victoria Park, Constance Gilmore, and Margot Mitchell.
Okay.
So, Margaret Mitchell and Constance Gilmore were on the board, and are asking for reappointment. Nancy, Victoria, and Hank are new applicants.
Okay, so, we would like to hear from each member who's here tonight, who would like to serve on the board, okay?
Start with Nancy.
And if you would just share with the council some of your work, your volunteer work, your experience, and why you would like to serve.
Well, currently, I'm working in the children's section, sometimes the teen section, and every once in a while, the audio section, AV. I've just started, within the last couple of months, I truly enjoy it, I work one afternoon a week, work with some really nice people, and have some wonderful families that come in. My history is, my work history and personal history is a social worker, and I started in special ed, and ended up doing lots of different things, getting a master's, and doing therapist, therapy work, but I just like being with people, I always have, so it's just fun.
Okay.
Getting to use, get to know the library, I don't know if it counts, I just moved here in October from Scottsdale, but I've been in Arizona for 21 years now, so I do know about northern Arizona, and I'm enjoying living here a lot.
Welcome. Glad to have you.
I can be a chatty cat, so if you have questions, you should call us.
Okay. Any questions?
Especially if I'm nervous.
Any questions from council?
Yeah.
Any questions from members of the public? Thank you very much, Nancy. Appreciate that. And...
Good evening, all. I have volunteered for the, at the library for about six or seven years now, and became a member of the advisory board about two years ago, and was recently inherited the job of president of the advisory board. I'm a great advocate of our library, I'm very proud of our library here in this community. I think it's great, I think that Vanessa's just doing the greatest job ever, and we have more people pouring in all the time, it's just great, and it's a great group of people, and it's worthy of everyone's use, and accolades, I believe. Are there any questions?
You've done some fundraising, haven't you?
Yes, I did organize a fundraiser with Pat Manheim of the Manheim Gallery for the benefit of the library.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Okay.
I'm Connie Gilmore, and I've just finished my third year, I can't believe it's been three already, on the board. I'm currently serving as the secretary. I'm semi-retired from Yavapai College, and I also worked in the Verde Valley as a school librarian for a number of years, so, lived here for 22 years, totally support libraries of all kinds, and would happy to continue, to continue serving on the library board. So, questions?
Questions, counsel? And questions from members of the public for either applicant?
Hello, I'm Victoria Park, I've been resident of Cottonwood for a little over three and a half years, and I'm a part-time student at college. I've been volunteering at the library for about a year, a little more now, and I've been an Arizona resident for almost 18 years. I just thought I would enjoy serving on the board, and that's about it.
Thank you very much. Any questions, counsel, for Ms. Park? And any questions from the public? All right, thank you very much. Okay, so, we have four positions open. Counsel, Mr. Linsky?
Well, I appreciate that two of the women here tonight have volunteered for the library. I'd like to see that we appoint them to serve on the board as well, they've certainly shown an interest and dedication to the library, and I think we should encourage them to serve on the board, so they can get more involved. Those two would be Nancy Trippiano and Victoria Park, and I will make a motion if you're ready.
Okay.
So, I'll move to, can I just do those both at once?
Sure.
Move to point, move to approve resolutions number 2779 and 2780, inserting the names of Nancy Trippiano and Victoria Park.
Second.
Okay, so, Mr. Linsky made the motion, and Mr. Howagie seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And I would definitely say Constance Gilmore should be considered for one of the positions, as she has already been a volunteer, and her resume is like no other. She's been the librarian for Cottonwood Oak Creek School District, and she's been a professor at the college, and I can't remember all the things that you did when I read them, but pretty amazing background and talents. So, I would make a motion to appoint Constance Gilmore to one of the positions.
Second there.
2781, I guess this one would be right.
I think it's 80.
81.
Or 81, you're right.
Okay. And so, the mayor made the motion, and Mr. Garrison seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we have one more position, 2782.
We have Ms. Mitchell, who's on the board at this moment, right?
Yes.
I think the council has always made it a point to reappoint current members who are wishing for, to remain on the, on the council, I mean, on the council, on the board.
Absolutely.
With that, I would like to fill the last position, 2782, with Margaret Mitchell.
Second. Okay, so, Mr. Howagie made the motion, the vice mayor seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And for those who are, we'll keep applications for at least six months, for those who were not appointed, we certainly appreciate everyone's interest and dedication, and wish there could be a place for everyone. But the bump, the meetings are public, and you can attend and share your ideas, and so hopefully, you will be able to do that, so. Deputy Clerk, please read resolutions number 2779, 2780, 2781, and 2782 by title only.
Resolution number 2779, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, appointing Nancy Trippiano, a member of the library board of the City of Cottonwood, and establishing her term of office. Resolution number 2780, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, appointing Victoria Park, a member of the library board of the City of Cottonwood, establishing her term of office. Resolution number 2781, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, appointing Constance Gilmore, a member of the library board and of the City of Cottonwood, establishing her term of office. And resolution 2782, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, appointing Margaret Mitchell, a member of the library board of the City of Cottonwood, and establishing her term of office. Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Thank you all so much for all you do, and for being here tonight. Okay, resolutions number 2783 and 2784, appointing members to the city's personnel board.
Madam Mayor, council members, thank you for putting this on the agenda. One thing I would like to ask whether we could do is change the expiration term of the new terms to December 31st, 2016. Typically, the personnel board terms, according to the documentation I found in files, is to run from January 1st through December 31st of the following year for a two-year term. I'd like to reestablish that term. Yes, whoever the two are that are selected tonight will serve only 11 months instead of 12, or 23 months instead of 24 months, but I don't think anybody will have heartburn with that. So, I'd like to reestablish those back to December 31st of 2016, if possible.
Does our agenda, can we, does it, is it pretty broad enough to allow for that?
Yes, Madam Mayor, that would be the council's prerogative.
Wonderful. Okay, thank you.
I'll just have to get things going a little sooner, so I can bring them in in December, two years from now, so.
Okay.
There were three applicants this time, two of those are currently serving on the personnel board, and that is Steve Dockry and Ed Kyler, and we have a new applicant, Richard or Dick Ritchie, and I'd like all three to be considered by the council, and two need to be selected to serve for the next two years then.
Okay, so, if we could hear from each applicant, let me see, how do we, we'll just take them as they are listed on our packet, so we have Steve Dockry. If you'd just come up and share with us a little bit of information about yourself, and I think you've been on this board for quite some time already, 12 years?
Madam Mayor and council, Steve Dockry. I've served on this particular board two years.
Two, okay.
It's all I've served. I serve on two other school boards, I've served on the city council, and just an opportunity to continue to serve the City of Cottonwood, and maybe not quite as much time as you folks spend, but still an opportunity to serve.
As you know from being on the council, and also, talking about water, this is the guy right here, when Mr. Howagie was the mayor, that the two of them worked very diligently on purchasing the water companies, but I think that, as mayor, that Mayor Howagie had assigned Mr. Dockry to be kind of the point person through the process, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions? Any questions for members of the public? If not, our next person is Ed Kyler.
Thank you, mayor, council. Ed Kyler, a 15-plus-year resident of Cottonwood, been a member of the personnel board for the last 14 years, currently the chairman. I would like, excuse me, extend that to at least one more term on the board before I accept my retirement package. If there's any questions, I'd be able...
Or before we raise your pay, one or the other, right?
Well, that was the last time that got shot down there.
All right. Any questions, counsel, for Mr. Kyler? Thank you very much, thank you for your service. And next, we have Richard, also known as Dick Ritchie.
Please, counsel, Madam Mayor, I'm Dick Ritchie, born and raised in Colorado. To keep it simple, Iris has all of the information on the app. I'm an old, slow, fat, retired chief of police. So, that's pretty simple. I'm more than happy to answer any questions council might have.
Any questions, counsel? Mr. Linsky?
I just would like to know what, what inspired you to run for this board?
My wife asked me that, too. I really don't know. My wife's not well, and we've lived in Fountain, or in Cottonwood, for 12 years, moved here from Fountain, Colorado, and I was chief of police there, in Fountain, and of course, attended all the council meetings, and served on many boards, and I just felt that maybe I ought to get my fingers wet a little bit, get back in the, not politics, but it's, it's a lot of fun. And the personnel board is, is a little different than a lot of your boards, because the decision that the personnel board makes can upset the life of an employee, and make them mad, and it can upset council, unions, whatever it might be. So, it's a, it's a board that really has to take down. Many times, I wish that I had a board that I could say, hey, they made me do it, because I had to make decisions that weren't real popular, and the board will also make decisions that's not real popular.
All right. Anybody else, any other council members? And vice mayor, are you on that board?
Yeah, Ed and I have probably been on the board at the same length of time.
Okay, because I was reading, and it didn't say a council member, it said three city.
We do the council members at other times on this board.
Oh, okay.
I believe, don't we, Iris?
She's a liaison to the board.
Oh, okay, okay.
Not a voter, Dan, but appointed by the council.
Got it, okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Ritchie, very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you for offering your talents. Okay, so, any discussion from the council?
Mr. Garrison, you're looking at me?
I can make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
I appreciate that we actually have two different boards coming up tonight, and we've had more people wanting to be seated on those than we had positions available, and that's nice to see. And I do appreciate everybody that has put their name in the hat, and hopefully, we sent them a nice letter thanking them for wanting to participate in the system, and hopefully, they will in the future. Once again, with that said... Once again, with that said, I would like to approve resolution twenty-seven eighty-three, appointing Steve Dockery to the personnel board for a two-year term, and I would like expiring December thirty-first, twenty sixteen. And I would like to approve resolution number twenty-seven eighty-four, appointing Mr. Ed Kyler to the personnel board for a two-year term expiring December thirty-first, twenty sixteen.
Second. Okay, Mr. Garrison made the motion, the vice mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Deputy clerk, please read resolutions number twenty-seven eighty-three and twenty-seven eighty-four by title only.
Resolution number twenty-seven eighty-three, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, appointing William Dockery, a member of the city's personnel board, and establishing his term of office. And resolution number twenty-seven eighty-four, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, appointing Ed Kyler, a member of the city's personnel board, and establishing his term of office. Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And Mr. Ritchie, we'll keep your application on file for six months. I'd like to say forever, but that's all the state library will allow us to keep records. So you can always check in with Iris and, um, update that. And there are also many other boards and commissions, and we hope you will apply again because you would have a lot to offer. Thank you very much. Okay, item number three is public hearing regarding the final selection for the city's twenty-fifteen Community Development Block Grant Funding Project. Mr. Charlie Scully.
Thank you, mayor, council members. Uh, just like to go over what the council has done so far, and the background on this, and then a summary of where we'd go from now, depending on the option taken. Of course, the CDBG program is part of a national program that affects, uh, every small city in the country is part of it, or part of the. The, um, amount of money that's available for the grant is estimated to be in around two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars, minus the required administrative costs, and if there's engineering and architecture services, I think probably around two hundred and forty thousand plus dollars could be available for project costs. So that's what we're, the scope we're working in, and it, of course, needs to meet some rigid requirements to, uh, provide benefits to either low, moderate income populations or deterioration of areas. And so it goes through a, uh, fairly tough process of reviewing the qualifications. And, uh, the council had the first public hearing, October fourteenth, which, uh, according to NACOG, uh, their calculations were about twenty-three projects. Potential projects were discussed. From there, we took, uh, five priorities that were directed and came back on December sixteenth to the council meeting, and did a much more thorough evaluation of the eligibility and, and requirements for, uh, five projects. And from that, the, uh, from that December sixteenth meeting, I've come forward with the, uh, what were the top three projects, and, um, that would be the Cottonwood Civic Center Facility Improvements, the Verde Valley Senior Center, uh, Facility Improvements, and the Maine and Mingus Neighborhood Infrastructure Upgrade Project. And just to, uh, summarize where we'd go from here, depending on what's, there's one project that's to be selected, and that's been, uh, part of this program for a number of years now. So if you're gonna pick one of those projects, where we'd go, with the Civic Center, one of the first things we have to do is, uh, get a, a project architect and get a request for proposals. We have about two and a half months until they want the application delivered to NACOG for the first review. So it's a fairly quick turnaround. We, we basically be starting tomorrow, getting the process, uh, in the works. Through that, we'd be able to fine-tune what exactly would qualify, what the, uh, cost estimates and priorities were, but there's more than enough on that building to qualify. With the, with, uh, that would be basically the next big step from here, if you choose that. There's a number of other things on all these projects that come back to the council, some, uh, signatures and certifications, and there's the whole application that needs to get put together, but that would be the direction with that project. With this, uh, Senior Center, that would be a slightly different process. They would, uh, be, uh, functioning as a sub-recipient because it's a nonprofit organization. Uh, there's some different procedures set up under the, uh, under CDBG for how you do that. One of the things there would start the process would be getting NACOG to facilitate a meeting between the city and the Senior Center very quickly to start scoping out what, uh, who's doing what, and you develop a preliminary agreement so that everybody understands who, what, where, and when and how. And then through that, uh, probably there'd be a project architect and a request for proposals, but who does what would be determined through the process, and we'd have NACOG to really help work us through every step. And that would, I think, take care of itself as well, and that could be, uh, uh, there's a couple of extra steps, and there's some extra requirements that, uh, documentation that the nonprofit has to provide, but they've done that before, so it should be a highly feasible process there. With the neighborhood improvements, uh, that would involve some flood and drainage, uh, spot fixing, and there's some road issues, and there's a combination of things that get done. Uh, some utility lines, some, uh, a series of smaller improvements scattered through the neighborhood. We'd also need to, um, have a, a project engineer, whether it's in-house or not. We'd have to figure that out and get working on that real quick, whether there's some outside consultant, and again, another request for proposals, that, uh, that funding comes out of the grant. So that's kind of built in, but it's rather a timing issue. There's more than enough in that neighborhood that needs to get done. It's really what determining the priorities. So we'd have a busy couple of months, and, uh, each one has a slightly different path. I would summarize by saying, uh, each of these projects qualifies, is eligible, has merit, would be good projects for the community. Be good in any case, to be able to do them all, but there's really only one that gets selected. They're, uh, uh, and then I guess just one other kind of thing to keep in mind is each of these projects has a kind of relationship to the historic values. The both the Civic Center and the Senior Center are important historic buildings. The, the Senior Center is listed on the, individually on the National Register of Historic Places, and the Civic Center is a major contributing property to the historic National Historic District, which is the Cottonwood Commercial Historic District. And then the neighborhood in Maine and Mingus was originally laid out, a part of it, in nineteen seventeen. There's a lot of older buildings. There's, uh, certainly, uh, has a historic kind of feel. And so there, each of those things would be incorporated into any of these grants, that awareness of the background. So it's really up to the council to make a choice. They're all good choices, but, um, we're hoping that, uh, that a decision can be made tonight so we can start the process because the deadline is looming in April, beginning April.
Okay, so at this time, we'll, um, any questions before we move into our public hearing? Questions? Okay, so we'll hear from the public now. We would open, uh, the floor to a public hearing regarding the final selection for the city's twenty-fifteen Community Development Block Grant Funding Project. So are there any members of the public who would like to speak on this item? If not, we'll close the floor to the public and move on to item, or move on to resolution number twenty-seven seventy-eight, authorizing the submission of an application for fiscal year twenty-fifteen, state community development block grant funds, certifying that said application meets the community's previously identified housing and community development needs and the requirements of the state CDBG program, and authorizing all actions necessary to implement and complete the activities outlined in said application. Counsel? Discussion? Oh, Mr. Elensky?
Well, I think all three are high priorities. They're all worthy of, um, you know, getting funded to the CDBG monies. Um, my, my heart is in the Civic Center. I think everyone here knows that. You know, I wish we could pick all three, but this is just a great opportunity to put money into a, uh, a building which is enjoyed by all of the community. Uh, you know, whereas the city has, has tried, for as long as I've been on council, to put money into that facility without success. We just can't seem to find it in our budget. This is a good opportunity to put a large chunk of money that would, um, help preserve this community building far into the future. Not saying that the, uh, senior citizens center building is not as important, but, um, you know, we, we assisted with the construction of that years back and got them up and running, essentially. So I think this is, um, you know, we, we need to do the same thing now for the Civic Center because it's, it's used and abused every day, and it just has, has for a long time needed, um, some help. So that's, that's where my heart is.
And that's a good point, too, uh, as far as that goes. Going back to the Senior Center, uh, like I said, they're all worthy projects. I don't think anybody's, uh, trying to trump one to the other, but the, uh...